This is a call to order, this meeting of the Seaburg School Board. It's Wednesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. This meeting has been noticed, since a regular meeting of the Seaburg School Board, and notices have been placed in the district and sent to the news graphic and to the Milwaukee Journal Center. And everyone, please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have the pleasure of being introduced to some fine young people by Mr. DeRosa.
Thank you, Mr. Reimer. As you know, it's a busy time of the year for anybody in the music department. Shreve High School can say the same thing with that concerts, plenty the last two weeks at CPAC, at the school, on the community, and here tonight. So I would like to introduce our choir director, Ms. Fay, and she brought with her this evening the jazz choir.
Thank you. Quickly, this is our jazz choir, it's an extracurricular group, this is about, we usually have about forty, but these great kids decided to come out tonight, thank you. We have two quick songs, one is called "Up on the House Top," it's kind of a Pentatonic version, a little different, and then we wish you a Merry Christmas, so please enjoy.
(singing) Up on the house top, up on the house top, yeah, yeah. Up on the house top, up on the house top, quick, quick, quick. Up on the house top, reindeer pause, how jumps good old Santa Claus? Down through the chimney with lots of toys, all for the little ones' Christmas choice. Ho, 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 who would it go? Ho, 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 who would it go? Up on the house top, quick, 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 down through the chimney with good stage. Up on the house top, up on the house top, yeah, yeah. Up on the house top, up on the house top, quick, quick, quick. First with the stocking, it'll be till now, oh, yes, Santa's up in a little while. He appears only in the last stage, he cries, one leg can open and shut its eyes. Ho, 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 who would it go? Ho, 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 who would it go? Up on the house top, quick, 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 down through the chimney with good stage. Up on the house top, up on the house top, yeah, yeah. Up on the house top, up on the house top, quick, quick, quick.
(singing) We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. Good tidings for Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
(applause) Can you go to the right?
Thank you. Guys, don't have to go, we'll only be here another four or three hours. Thank you. All right, moving on to resolutions and recognitions. It's my pleasure to recognize Mr. Rick Leach. This is a WASBEE member recognition, and at each regional meeting, WASBEE recognizes school board members who have reached the new achievement level in the WASBEE member recognition program by attending and participating in activities and events sponsored by WASBEE and the National School Boards Association. Through its member recognition program, WASBEE recognizes board members who are committed to professional development. Board members earn points for attending WASBEE and NSBA events and participating in specific activities. Our very own Rick Leach has reached achievement level two for his service as our WASBEE delegate and will be publicly recognized at a WASBEE Fall Regional Meeting. Thank you, Rick, for your leadership and commitment to the success of our students. So what that means is not only does Mr. Leach attend these meetings and attend countless other ones, subcommittee meetings, but he also represents us at the WASBEE meetings and votes on our behalf and on behalf of the district, and he's been doing this for some time. He also goes to the annual convention and works through all of that. So it's my pleasure to present you, Rick, with this certificate acknowledging all your contributions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda, Mr. Bigdank.
Thank you, Chris. Board members, in front of you, you have the items, approval for the consent agenda. The first is the board minute, the board meeting minutes, November twentieth. Also, we need approval for the budget hearing minutes, the October twenty-fourth budget hearing meeting. So I'm asking for approval of the district financial information, including summary of accounts, chapter register, chapter detail, credit card transactions, and personnel report.
Thank you. Among the reporting, we have just a few changes in classified support staff, and as far as professional staff goes, we do have one retirement request for Kim Walters.
I'll approve the consent agenda.
Motion second, all is in favor. Aye against. Motion carries. Moving on to super community notes. World Star Strategic Instructional Plan in School Celebration, Alan and Tony.
I'm going to turn over to Alan.
Good evening, everyone. Annually, we ask each school and provide some time for them to share and be spotlighted here at the board meeting. So for the next five meetings, we'll have each school have a chance to have some time here with you. This evening, we have Webster Middle School here, and we've asked them this year to spotlight two areas. One of the areas around instructional practices that are making a difference for students, and then also the school celebration that relates to an improvement area they've been working on. I've had the good fortune of meeting with Tony before today, and there's lots of exciting things going on at Webster that we can all celebrate with him. Up on the screen, you'll see a theory of action, which is really kind of an organizer for any kind of strategic improvement. And so as you listen tonight, generally speaking, most improvements all fall into these buckets: leadership practices, organizational practices, and instructional practices. So based on research that the school or the administration's reading, study around data like forward exam results, any kind of results that we're looking at, all begin to shape, even survey results, shape the kinds of improvements that the school is making. So tonight, Tony's got quite a few different things that he's going to be highlighting, so I just walk him to the podium and turn over to Tony.
Thank you, Alan. So everything you're going to hear falls under the umbrella of social and emotional learning. Certainly, there's some instructional and academic components that fall into this, but last year, with all of our stakeholders, parents, students, staff, social and emotional learning was by far our biggest need in the building. And it was really, how do we start to tackle that, how do we start to address that? If students aren't feeling comfortable, if they're not feeling safe, learning becomes secondary. And you need to obviously have a learning environment where students do feel safe, do feel comfortable, so that learning can take place. And so, again, this was an area of focus that arose, and so we rolled our sleeves, and it was probably about, you know, February last year, where we started putting a plan together and some steps, and, you know, start figuring out, you know, what we want to start putting in place for our students, so we start having a healthier environment for our kids, so that our academics can improve. And so this is a little bit of our journey. Last year, we had our first cohort of staff go through RAD training. There were ten staff members that went through the training in seventeen eighteen, including myself. RAD is a framework, definition there, a framework, a culture that's created in the classroom that really is about reading across the content areas. There's a lot of different strategies, there's a lot of different people out there that sell or, you know, package different techniques or strategies, but this is a much more all-inclusive framework for reading, and it has a lot to do with the culture of the classroom. And this is something that all students benefit from. So we had ten students, or ten faculty members go through the training last year, and seven are going through the training this year. The training, pretty comprehensive, it really doesn't click until you go through kind of the final series of trainings. So, you know, for myself, it was really more towards the end of the year last year where all the pieces start to come into play. There's certainly a lot that goes on through the entire process, and a lot of coaching pieces that go on with the staff, with each other. So both a cultural component in the classroom, with the social-emotional pieces and instructional as well. Number seven went to the inclusion conference. Our district has been sending teams from each of the buildings in the district each year to the inclusion conference through Student Services with Ted's direction, and over the course of time, we're able to get more and more staff members throughout the entire district training. And Webster was able to send eight staff members, including myself, to that training last year. So again, we're looking at all-inclusive instructional practices, I mean, into banging for a buck with the instructional piece and with the social-emotional classroom, school environment piece. Below that, we have our PBIS matrix, where if you've had students come through Webster, you've probably heard the acronym RISE, Respect, Individual, Self, and Environment, and that is constantly being updated and tweaked. And last year, and this year more than ever before, getting student leadership involved in shaping that classroom matrix and making some tweaks and changes with that. And you see the student rollout piece on there, again, having a student leadership team be a part of the rollout to all of the students this year. So for the first time, we really had students take ownership and rolling that out to the entire school. Grading smarter, not harder. Dan and I attended the AWESO conference, was that?
Two years ago.
Excuse me, I'll grab my tea over here. I think that was two years ago, and we took our time, read the book, and then last year, bought the book for our entire staff, they read the book. Our leadership team, over the course of the summer, read the book, and we made some changes this year with our grading policy. If I explained the grading changes to you, and we could certainly have a two-hour discussion around it right now, because I'm sure some of you would agree with the changes, and some of you would probably not agree with the changes. When you talk about grading in a school, it's certainly one of the very contested items, but the changes that we've made really, again, benefit all students, and the social and emotional payout with the changes that we've made have been very substantial, and, you know, really making sure that students have multiple opportunities to achieve success and master equal exams. We've made some changes to our PAW time. Now, you know, all the schools have a Pi time in their schedule, with all ours PAW time. We used to have these mini courses that students rotated through, we made some tweaks and changes there. Students see their homeroom teacher every single day compared to last year, they only saw their homeroom teacher in that Pi time at the beginning of the quarter and at the end of the quarter. It made the homeroom lessons just seem very disingenuous, when you would see a student at the beginning of the quarter, and you'd talk about some heavy topics like drugs or alcohol, and then you wouldn't see the student again for several weeks, and then, "Oh, hey, hey, welcome back," and we're going to talk about diet and stress and bowling. So we had to change up that whole structure, and so now those lessons take place every Monday, every Monday, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we did bring back a study hall. We went away from a study hall and went into the block schedule, and after some time, we heard loud and clear from our student population that, they asked, "We need a little sliver of time back into the day." When students are absent, how, there's no time built in the day for students to catch up with teachers. When do we retake assessments? All of those things were taking place during lunch. When do I get extra help? And we heard loud and clear from our students that said, "Please, can we have some time in the day where we can go catch up with teachers, have an opportunity to retake assessments, get extra help, things like that?" So that was some of the changes that we made to our PAW time. And then Friday is that teen time, where our teachers and students are doing fun activities, team building, and just trying to bring some of the fun back into the building. Lunch with homerooms, again, this was new this year, we started off the beginning of the year where students ate lunch with their homerooms for the first two weeks. We took away the whole stress of, "Where do I sit? Where do I go?" All of the sixth graders, I'm like, "What's happening at lunch?" That's all kids think about during the day, and they stress out over it. We took that away, we let all the kids and all the families know that, "Don't worry about lunch, we had your seat number assigned for you, you're sitting with your homeroom." Continue on with the other more important things during the day. So a lot of our homeroom time for that first two weeks was relationship building, and then that carried right over into lunch. And then we still do some homeroom lunch days scattered throughout the school year. We enhanced our fifth and our fifth to sixth grade transition. We had the elementary's, the fifth graders come over to Webster in the spring, and we will continue that. And our student ambassador group, which I'll talk a little bit more about in just a minute, our student ambassadors, which are eighth graders, they led the entire program when the fifth graders came over to Webster, and it's just another great student leadership opportunity for our oldest students to lead the fifth graders in welcoming them to classroom. We talked about our homeroom lessons, so a lot of them revolve around character, and so, again, under the leadership of Ted, Nolan Student Services, we adopted the Second Step Character Education Program. As you can imagine, when you have these kind of lessons that rotate around character, they're a challenge. You know, middle school kids are very quick to shoot down any sort of lesson that revolves around your character, and they're hard to develop, and a lot of the materials were pretty old and antiquated. The Second Step Character Education Program, everything is updated, it's a lot newer, it's not so hokey, it's, the kids are, the feedback we receive from the students, and you know how honest they are, the feedback has been pretty positive, like, "Mr. DeRosa, these aren't so bad." We'll take that feedback. The WILD Conference, a number of teachers that are in charge of our student ambassador group, they went to the WILD Conference, that's where they brought back a lot of our ideas for how that student ambassador group functions in the school, so that's where they got a lot of their ideas. Enhanced SLO scheduling process, so that definitely is a strong academic piece, where for the first time, to this level of specificity, where when we talk about SLOs, we really have small cohorts of students that within their schedules are shared by a small number of teachers. So when those teachers get together to discuss those students, there's no wasted time talking about other students that those teachers may not have. So sometimes in the middle school, when you have those team meetings, there's a lot of students that could be on the agenda that you might not have on your roster. With the way we've done the scheduling this year for our SLO students, every teacher has those students on their roster, so the conversations are much more structured and productive. After-school tutoring and then 2.0, for a long time, we've got a partnership with the high school for our tutoring program, where students are referred and they are individually partnered up with a high school tutor. That program still remains, but to take it up a notch, we've really just opened up our doors on those tutoring days for any of our students to have a place to go to get work done. And we just call it Wolverine Time, and then we also have some of the high school tutors that are just on hand, we can just call them floaters, but they're just on hand. So any of our students can go on that Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, they don't have to be in the tutoring program, but it's just a place for them to go to get extra help, find a place to study, get help, get organized, whatever. Number of staff members went to the Character Education Conference, so we've got it all ducktails together with a lot of the work that we're doing and a lot of creating something additional, just really into a lot of the work that's already taking place.
What would that mean, that is the plate conference?
What's that?
Whether the character education is adding another thing to the plate that is the plate?
It's the plate, Chris. Right. So a lot of times, you go to these conferences, and it's something extra, it's an addition too. And so if we had not done any of these other things that I discussed, a lot of times, you go to a conference like this, and then it seems like this add-on, and rather than having it be an add-on, the team takeaway was, this is the plate, it's the foundation of these things. We had already been doing so many of these things, we just started to weave and blend in to a lot of the work that was already taking place. So it wasn't an add-on, it's like the plate along with everything else that we were doing. And then our two student groups, again, a big focus of this was more student leadership for the whole student body, and more ownership for our eighth graders, take more ownership and leadership over the building. The student ambassadors are eighth grade only, so as seventh graders, they need to apply, they need to be referred, they fill out an application, they go through an interview process, and those seventh graders get selected before the end of their seventh grade year. They then go through a little training over the summertime, and then they are the student ambassadors in the eighth grade year. Those students, I talked about some of the homeroom lessons that take place throughout the year, those Mondays, the student ambassadors lead a lot of those homerooms. So one of the other new things that we've done this year is, we've paired up homeroom teams, we have cross-grade level homeroom teams. There's nine teams, where there's a sixth grade, seventh grade, and an eighth grade homeroom that are all paired together, that make one cross-grade level team. And we do different competitions, spirit days, where that team, their team, they compete, they have points, they can earn, you know, acknowledgements or recognitions. But when we do some of these lessons, the student ambassadors will go to those homerooms where the sixth graders and seventh graders are paired up, and those students teach the lessons to the younger students. So we've had a lot of great success in our first year doing that, and kudos to the teachers that lead that group and the students that are in it. And then the RED Gen Upstander Alliance Group, really more about creating an inclusive environment, standing up against bullying, things of that nature, they take a very active stance in that group for the building, and so they work in conjunction with a lot of these other student groups, whether it's the RISE, student ambassador group. All these groups tend to work in tandem, a lot of the kids are in multiple groups, and so we'll have meetings where we'll represent it, it's from all of these different groups that come together to work together. So, you know, a lot of our work behind this, again, is really getting back to focusing on the whole child, the whole student. I think when we changed our master schedule, we were so academic and focused, driven on a lot of those changes, that I think we lost sight a little bit of the social-emotional piece, and we're just looking to get back to that, wanting our kids to get back to, you know, feeling safe, feeling comfortable, bring some of the fun back into the building with our students and staff. I think if you walk through the building, there's just a nice calm, sense of calm, sense of fun that's back in the building, and, you know, hopefully the payout with that is obviously increased academics.
Thanks, Tony. I think these guys are giggling because they're eighth graders and all freshmen, so it's much.
The building's a little different.
A little common.
We understand why. We understand why this school's changed.
So I know at one point last year, I wasn't there, but I heard a lot from the different kids, you had a guest speaker come in and talk about bullying, and how you should treat each other, and then a couple of children got up and, like, did they say, like, you know, "I apologize, I've been not..." T to T. Do you recall?
There's the, are you referring to the courage, right? Yeah. So our seventh graders, that's a seventh grade experience, and then we've been doing that for, like, five years now, and that will continue, and we're still planning to do that in February.
It seemed like it was really good for that moment, and like, for a couple weeks after, you know, it translated over to like the sports teams and stuff like that, whereas observing the kids, and then it just doesn't, you know, it doesn't last, right? Nothing lasts that long. Is there a way to keep that going, or would it just be like, I guess the more stuff you do like that, the less sensitive they are to it, unless it works, but, I mean, I guess it's just a challenge to keep it going, right, at that age?
It's finding a balance to all of these things, you know. Sometimes I'll hear from parents like, "Don't you do lessons on anti..." Sure, yes, of course. There's a point of diminished return on some of these things, and then there's a point of saturation where it's almost like you're perpetrating a problem that almost doesn't exist, or that you're magnifying, that, you know, every school has issues where, you know, how kids treat each other sometimes, but it's like, if you talk about something every day, you're making it seem like there's, you're trying to treat something that doesn't necessarily exist to that degree. So it's definitely a balancing act of, you know, how much you want to cover something. I think the, I think what a lot of our work this year is, you know, in addition to all the things that we're doing, is really coaching everybody, especially students, is to handle and address things when they happen. That's the biggest learning piece, when something happens, how do we move through it right away, rather than letting something sit in the breast for a long time, then it builds up and never gets addressed.
And then, when you have those lunches with the homerooms, do you see behaviors decrease? Sorry, behaviors? I mean, I know stories and everything you hear, and that's where a lot of stuff happens, it's hard to supervise that, and, you know, you guys do a great job, but, you know, I know the kids would hate it, but it would almost seem like the more you would do that, you know, the less behaviors was, bullying or whatever you might have in the lunchroom, is that what you see when you bring them back after, you know, after a month, and they're sitting with their homeroom, do you see those behaviors stop that normally would happen every day? Kids kind of mellow out?
Staff like the homeroom lunches, lunchroom supervisors like the homeroom lunches, it has a different feel. But, you know, when some of the, when we try to kind of recalibrate lunchtime, have some of those conversations with the students, you know, and tell them, "We don't want to," you know, a lot of their day is structured. "I don't want to structure your entire day." "I want to be able to trust you in unstructured times, and lunch is one of them, and here's the rules, here's the responsibility you have, I would prefer to let you handle that responsibility maturely, I don't want to have to structure and, you know, you know, put a thumb on every single second of your day in lunch, sometimes, sometimes you're going to take that away, but I prefer to let lunch..."
True.
"...have that responsibility, that for you."
Okay. All right, thank you.
Tony, I like the fact that you're looking at the job wholly perspective, you know, to address, Chris is...
The whole plate.
The whole plate, you know, it's, the presentation that you're referring to, Chris, the way you adjusted this year allows you to have that ongoing conversation, it changes the homeroom, you can visit a team consistently over a period of time versus just a one-shot meeting. And I think that's what you need, and as you identify that need, and you can take the steps to make those adjustments, I applaud that effort, because too often, I think in schools, we get pretty sidetracked, here, 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 and sometimes you're assuming kids are making all those connections and they're not, and so you've structured an environment now where you can foster and cultivate those connections.
I appreciate it, Tony. I had a sixth grader eleven years ago at Webster, I had a sixth grader five years ago, and I have a sixth grader this year, and by far, my sixth grader this year has had the easiest and the most seamless transition to middle school, he's enjoying it. I mean, another individual kid, because they're going to vary, but the efforts that you all at Webster have been making are definitely noticed, definitely appreciated as well, and I see the effects on my own child, so I, from that small standpoint, it's been great.
Yeah, I would echo that. I've had a child in Webster for the last five years or so, six years, and I have a sixth grader in there right now, and he seems to be having, you know, a really good time and adjusting well, so thank you.
Previous board made it so the teachers knew that it was a...
Right. Yeah. Reese's kids.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. All right, moving right on to... Alright, moving right on to building project plan update.
Thank you, Chris. As I did on the previous board meetings, I'd like to start with an update on the building project, and I'm excited to continue the conversations, there's been a great deal of work that's going on since the last presentation that I made a month ago. It's fun to start with the plan, and this is the preliminary design schedule that we are following. And for the most part, we are on schedule, I think the schematic design section is probably, a portion of our, the schedule's probably going to get drawn out a little bit, most likely into mid-February. And that's just a result of trying to schedule all meetings with teachers and those who are using the spaces that are being touched by this project. And I think so far we've probably had close to maybe ten schematic design meetings with staff and administration, and we're making great progress. I don't think stretching this out is going to have any impact on the construction schedule as it's set up now, but we want to make certain we are due diligence in engaging with all the staff who are using those spaces. So since November, we've had a number of different engagements, and I think one of the most significant is to teach the technology, tech ed advisory team. And this is a picture of that team, and we've had two meetings, and we have two more on the books before the end of January. And then we'll have a scattering of meetings throughout the rest of the year. And there's a nice diverse group represented here. Kevin, thank you very much for attending both of the meetings. And you can see in the lower right-hand corner, those who attended M A T C, Mississippi, Fox Valley Tech, TSR Solutions, Carver City Tool, Shabu Ray, a really good representation of the community that's really, that's helping us guide in the development of our tech ed spaces and talking about programming. So that's been a very fruitful conversation, and it is really a schematic design process where we are talking about how we're using those spaces and how we want to plan future programming for those spaces. And other items on this timeline, the Velo Corporation, that's a Scott Pumph Corporation that's down on the corner of Pioneer in Washington, we engage with them, so we're excited to partner with them as we begin to develop our spaces. We continue with our core team meetings every other Tuesday, and Kevin, again, has been generous enough to commit his time to meet from seven to eight-thirty, and it's an update on where we are in the schedule and the organization of the work that we have in front of us. Communication plan is in the midst of being developed, and we'll present that at the January board meeting. And schematic design process, the long-range master plan, we're just about finished with that long-range master plan, we'll represent that to the board. Here's another look at the activity that's taken place from November to December. Just a few pictures of the schematic design teams that have met at each of their respective buildings. So Parkview, Thorson, Webster, we had a number of meetings here at the high school. Every meeting, we go there and we listen. All we do is ask questions and we listen to the teachers. And Joe Clark from the whole design group is generally the one who's asking questions. And the staff are sharing how they use the spaces, things that are working well in the spaces, things that are not working well, and what does future programming look like in those spaces. So it's through this question, questioning process and engagement that we are able to define, define what those spaces even look like through this schematic design process. A look ahead, we are going to continue with the process, and here's some of the groups that we are looking forward to meeting with. 4K, FIAE, Project Ed Away, the IMC, tech ed is going to continue to be ongoing. Office staffs, we just met with Webster in the question, I think we met with Webster, talking about safety and security, how we're going to redesign that office area, entrance area to really enhance safety and security. And that conversation's taking place at all of the groups. So these are the meetings that we, that we engage with a little bit myself. Again, a look ahead, just another way of looking at it from January through March. We're going to continue with the schematic design process. We'll bring a draft of the long-range master plan to the B and G in January, and then we'll bring that final draft to the board for approval in January. We have a tech ed, two more tech ed advisory team meetings in January, and then we'll continue through the rest of the year, probably leading over six to eight weeks. In February, the goal is to start the design development process. We are planning on a board workshop in March, and we're going to get data up to board members so we can discuss and look at the plans that have been developed based on those engagements with staff. So that would be the first really official deep dive, it'll probably be a three-hour workshop that we have to set aside to cover all the plans that have been developed through that schematic design process. And then after that, we work to get on the budget, raise all that, and what does it look like when we move forward to safety and budgeting. Deeper dive, so we've already started some work, and it's on the site and civil engineering aspect of this process, and really focusing in on survey and landscape design and civil engineering. And I'm going to let John talk a little bit about that process, because it's time-bound, and that's why we've been moving this process so quickly.
So on December 6th at the Building Rounds Committee meeting, we discussed the need to move forward a little quicker than expected with the civil site survey and the landscape design. The reason is, with snow cap, it's hard to do that, and it pushes that back. So we proceeded with that, we went out to bid. Civil engineering survey and landscape qualification list was confirmed, the consultant list was prepared from input from administration, C D Schmidt, as well as growth design. The consultants were pre-qualified, contacted ahead of time, confirmed their interest and availability, and then the interested consultants were sent an RFP. There were six consultants that were, that were sent RFPs, all six of those applied back and sent their RFPs back with their proposals. And those proposals were received and reviewed by our team that we put together and assembled to review that. The selection process to determine the best consultant based upon that RFP. And the best qualified bidder was reviewed and selected, that being, as it turns out, was the lowest bid. Not always required to have that, usually does, but as we reviewed it, we couldn't DQ anybody based upon any of the information that they presented us, and we'll review that right now. So the invited firms were J B Site Design Engineering LLC. Typically, this process here would go on during a Building Rounds Committee meeting, we're moving into this level. You'll get this information at the board level, but we vet through this at the B and G committee, but because of the need to move forward, you've probably seen surveyors out there, you've probably seen people out doing some work. We want to get this done before the snow cap came. So J B Site Design, M Square, R A Smith, Capoor, J S D Professional Services, and Grave. We received bids from all of those, and just to summarize briefly, J B Site Design was a little bitter, and, you know, based upon the actual number, it looks like M Square it was, but they did not include landscaping in their proposal. And that varied between, you know, thirteen to fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars difference. So we did accept a low bid of J B Site Design. Growth Design vetted, all of these, discussed all of these, communicated with all of them after the bids came through. And then I interviewed with our team, J B Site Design, to make sure that we had a comfort level with them. That in fact did occur, and then we moved forward with J B Site Design. So again, this process will probably happen and occur, will happen and occur at the Building Rounds Committee level, and they get pushed forward to the board, but because of the need to move forward, that's why we're here tonight.
So John had mentioned it would take place at the B and G, so at the January B and G meeting, we'll go over the bid process, and we'll also go through that process in January, to make certain the board's clear on all the bids that are going to be brought forward, and how that process is going to play out in those bids. This was a time-sensitive one, and that's why we had a move on it, but we want to make certain that the board was clear on the process that we use to select a civil engineer. Access to more information, it's always on our website, we've read on our website, so all the information that's presented here and additional information that we posted on our website, we still have a Q and A site on there, so anyone from the community has questions, they can submit a question, and we will post that on our frequently asked question portion of the website. Lastly, just to thank you, these are our high school students, these students presented at our tech ed advisory team meeting a week ago, and I can't recall the actual activity, although those are true impressions of, I believe, themselves. And it was interesting, because when these young ladies were presenting, they were talking about the different tools that they were using, and many of the tools that they were using were tools that you would find in woods. And one of the young ladies, I think her father was in construction, and she was saying, when she was growing up, she'd hear all these tools up in the back being used, and it would frighten her. She didn't want to go out there, she was actually staying away from the area. And so now, as a high schooler, she's actually educating herself about those tools, and she now appreciates, has a deeper appreciation of the work that her father was doing. No longer is she right in front of the tools, in fact, she's using the tools on this particular art project. So it was a very educational component that will be added to the tech ed advisory. I don't know if the teachers are seeing, appreciate that. Any questions, board members? Excellent, so we're going to segue into the first action item, which is related to the referendum, financing around the referendum, and I'm going to let Ben kick that off.
So now begins the process for the borrowing of the referendum process. We started the steps needed to get that borrowed in place. As you know, it's going to be planned out to take over multiple phases over the next couple of years, with the largest chunk really focused on right now, to lock in the lowest interest rate that we can. But there are also honestly numerous steps to get that borrowed in place and moving forward. We have a short presentation with help of Brian Brewer and Barrett, we're just going to walk through real quick. Current market out there, where we stand, and then how we look at the year through January into March as we prepare for the borrow.
Good evening. We do have it on the screen, I do have a couple printed copies, if anyone wants to make notes along the way, let me know. As Ben introduced, my name is Brian Brewer, good to see everyone again. Todd, Ben and I have been working on updating the financing plan, lighting things up with Paulson Brady, the bond attorney, working on the project, to get the district in position to lock in the interest rates on the first long-term financing. And so tonight, we will, you have two action items in front of you, so we can walk through that process. The good news, as I explained to the Personnel and Finance Committee last Wednesday, if you look at this chart, is there a place around here?
Yes.
There we go, sorry to do it over here. So this snapshot, for those of you that have been on the board for a number of years, I've used this for at least the last ten years. And it's a thirty-year visual of movement in municipal bond interest rates. And, you know, I use it primarily to show that post the Great Recession, interest rates have been at abnormally low rates, relatively speaking. Because if you take this chart further back, you have to get to the early nineteen fifties to get back to borrowing interest rates, long-term borrowing interest rates at the levels that we see today. The board, those long-term board members know that, because right here was the low at the time, and that was the last time the district did a refinancing of referendum debt.
I think Kevin actually remembers the nineteen fifties.
Oh, they do.
It's only ten.
So that at the time was the lowest, this other low point was the Brexit, time period in the summer. So market uncertainty keeps interest rates low. And if you've been reading the newspaper in the last few weeks, there isn't market uncertainty. We've had a long run out of the Great Recession. Economic factors, unemployment, things like that are all positive, GDP growth is great. However, some of the, there's some market participants that believe that we're nearing the end, right? So that creates some fear and uncertainty. The new trade and tariff dealings back and forth also cause uncertainty. And so what's interesting about this, and I try to break it out, is if you look at a one-year snapshot, you know, interest rates have risen from a low point in November of last year to today. But if you look at the right side of this chart, in the last thirty days, kind of mid-November to mid-December, interest rates have lowered by about point three percent. So that may not sound like a lot, but when you're locking in over time fifty-nine million, but, you know, this first amount we're talking about is thirty-nine million, that's, will translate into avoidance of interest costs in excess of a million dollars. So while it may seem like a small fraction of a percent, when it's applied to a twenty-year repayment on thirty-nine million, you're currently on track to reducing the interest cost because of the timing of the approval from the community and, you know, what's going on in the market. So all of this is to say that, as you've known in your planning process over the last couple of years, you were approaching the end of your previous long-term referendum debt repayment. You organized and went through a long process to identify the projects that are needed for the next major investment. And you knew that you were in a time where you could potentially avoid millions of dollars of cost, both on project inflation and interest cost avoidance. And so here we are, at the first, with an approved referendum, at the first step of this process, where the market is actually moving in your favor. And you'll see in the booklet that if we laid out a rough timeline, like Ben and I already changed that timeline to try to get you in position quicker. We had a credit rating analysis interview earlier today. In the timeline, it was called for mid-November, primarily, or I'm sorry, mid-January. Primarily, that's us working ahead to try and get you ready for locking in this first thirty-nine million. Questions on that?
So can you just speak to why we want to do the whole forty-nine million, you know, interest rates went up? How far up would they have to go to make it not advantageous for us to wait for the other ten million?
Sure, and I will get to that in this discussion, that is where we spent a decent amount of the personnel finance...
If you're going to get to it, just keep going.
Yeah, I'll come back to it, if I don't, make sure that I, let me know. So here's the guiding principles, this page. As you have been communicating all along, the referendum, mill rate impact, your increase over what you're currently paying for debt is fifty-eight cents per thousand. The financing goals are to try to minimize the total interest cost, minimize your interest rate risk, which, Chris, to your point, that's, we'll talk about that here in a second, and then maximize the investment earnings. So those are kind of the three general principles. In that process, the district goes out for a credit rating assessment, so think of it as like similar to your personal credit score. And this third-party rating agency rates school districts and municipalities in Wisconsin and across the nation, and compares and contrasts them based on things that are within the board's control, such as budget, year-over-year budget results, multi-year planning, policies, procedures, you know, management of long-term liabilities, so all of those things that are within the board's control. And then there's socioeconomic and demographic factors of the communities that the district serves that are outside of the board's control. So the last time the district was in the market, the Moody's Investor Service, which is the credit rating agency, assigned a double A one to the school district, which if you see this chart just to the left here, that is one notch off of their highest possible. So saying this a different way, there's only, there's only one percent of Wisconsin school districts that have a higher rating than Cedarburg. And in the, in the current evaluation and the write-ups that we've seen, much of that is due to the things that are within the board's control. You know, with the things you do in those meetings, we were talking about during Mission Beach's summary, the multiple board meetings, the committee meetings, the subcommittee meetings, all of that work is rolled up and assessed in this process. And, you know, as a resident, I'm proud of the board, but... But, you know, others in the community should be proud of that painstaking work resulting in such a high credit score because that will help us access more investors, which drives down the cost of the borrowing. So any questions as Ben, because we highlighted all the key talking points to the analysts today. Mid-January, we should have the outcome of the committee assessment. And you would get a new credit rating for this new borrowing in January.
What we did in the PNF, too, is really dive into those districts that are at that AAA, what's within our control, what's outside our control. And the good news is a lot of things that are within our control, we're very strong in those areas that we just really don't have control over and that are keeping us from that top.
Well, would it be an example of something like that, like more manufacturing in the district, things like that?
More industrial development, median household income.
Larger population, high, more property value, total property value. Residents wealth, you know, income, per capita income. So certain, again, certain things you can't directly control. So to be at that high rating, it shows that you've been strong in the things you can control. And it's not to say that those aren't great scores either, you know, for our communities. It's just, you know, those are, when you line them up side by side, which is what we did in the PNF, it becomes pretty clear, you know, the reason there's that one notch difference.
Some more things that are under the control of the Cedarburg economy, constantly.
I mean, some of that.
Business and things like that, development is different.
Correct, correct. But I would argue some of it is, you know, the communities that make up the district wouldn't necessarily want some of the development that it would require to get to that next notch. So we should be happy living where we live at the AA1. Does that make sense? There are certain types of, like, industrial base that you need. I don't know that I, living here, I like our parks and green space and, you know, ease of access. And, you know, so some of those things are trade-offs. And you're going to get, so I guess I don't want to undersell this part. You know, at AA1, you're accessing the vast majority of potential buyers in the market. There are certain funds that say AAA only, right? AAA or better. But in the grand scheme of things, if you're at that double A or better, and if you're at the high end of the double A, which is where you are, you're going to have access to the majority of the buyers. So it's, while it's nice to have that top notch, again, the trade-offs probably don't make it worth it.
There's a lot of, AAA is very rare. I mean, it's not, you don't see a lot of companies. There's a lot of Fortune 500 companies that aren't even R-rated, they're way lower R-rated. So the district is, that AA1 is a very high ratio. It's certainly nothing to be upset about. It's very high. As you mentioned, the percentage is high. But even the other companies around the world that are rated, there's a lot that are way lower than we are.
Correct. And as I put the rest of the scale, there's more below A as well. There's B, or triple B, double B, B, triple C, not only. But for a Wisconsin municipality with an approved project by voters, you know, you're generally going to see it somewhere in this range, A to or better. Any other questions on that? I raise it here because this is the time that you get this third-party analysis when you're accessing the market. So it'll be part of our process over the next year or two. So the repayment structure is 20-year repayment of debt from the time you issue the bonds. You know, we're targeting the mill decrease of 58 cents. We're structuring around the remaining payments on the 2017 energy efficiency debt, such that we're going to position you to pay down that principal as quickly as we can, which then helps achieve that goal of minimizing interest costs. So we phased it, all along, we've had a phase into three different phases in 2019, 2020, and 2021. The first phase, because rates are as low as they are, we are borrowing the bulk of the 59.8 million. We're borrowing 39.8. In the detailed plan I went through at PNF, it currently calls for 10 million in each of those other two years. However, what we discussed was, once this is locked in, and if it's locked in at lower than the four and a quarter that we've been using for the interest rate estimate, we can revisit the timing of when we borrow that next phase, right? So it doesn't, there's only a portion of it that's required to be in 2020 and 2021. So then we could potentially accelerate because of the market environment, because rates have come in lower. So you have flexibility to adjust based on how this first 40 million gets locked in. As I mentioned in the open, rates have come down. Currently, we're on track to reducing the interest cost by approximately 1 million. Ideally, you know, rates stay where they are and/or improve, and we can lower it even further. But right now, you're on track to avoiding a million dollars of interest cost. Again, along the lines with flexibility, you have two agenda items tonight. One is provides an interim funding to fund the construction account, to begin paying invoices from, for architect services, the site development, things like that. But it also allows you to maximize your investment earnings. So it will put funds into that project account that you won't spend for the next two and a half years, according to the spending schedule. So you will, you will get to earn income in US Treasury investments or FDAC insured CD investments, which will then be available to either complete the referendum scope of work or to pay down debt. So that's part of the plan of getting that funded in early January.
What rate is it going to be at right now?
So the bond anticipation note rate is 2.86. That's a six-month construction loan. But it's basically there to buy time for Ben and I to finish the long-term paperwork. And when we sell that into the market, that will be the 20-year rates. And that's that next bullet there, where we were using the four and a quarter for the 20-year estimate, right there, Chris? Currently, using a conservative estimate with current market, we're planning for a 3.94, which is where that million-dollar reduction comes from. That conservative estimate, right now, builds in another 0.3, so in case rates move back up from where we are. So if they don't, we could be talking in a month about 2 million of avoided interest costs. So the key to this plan is, it gives us flexibility to finalize the pricing. We utilize what was called a parameter resolution for prior bond issues. Basically, the board approves within certain parameters and delegates to the president and clerk the final sign-off of the bonding package and locking in rates separate from a board meeting. Basically, it gives us more than the once-a-month flexibility to get that done. So Chris, I'm getting to your answer here. So what will be locked in on this 40 million is the longest debt. The majority of the longest principal repayment, and it's the years 2027 to 2039. So think of that as years, you know, eight or nine to year 20 of the debt. And so by doing that, we're locking in the bulk of your interest cost now. Then we come back and do phase two and three. We can update and adjust. And the repayment, principal repayment is in the shorter years, so it's, it'll be years 19 through 27. And then part of the reason for issuing a portion of it in 20 and 21 is so that the 20-year repayment finishes in 2040 and 2041. So that's, so that's part of the reason for the three phases, Chris. And, you know, the reason we're doing the longest debt first is we do want to minimize that exposure to interest rates moving or changing between now and 2020 and 2021. Does that answer your question?
It does. I just wanted to say it here.
Yeah. And so this last bullet's important, too, because, you know, we structured the principal repayment based on a four and a quarter. If we can lock it in at 3.8, let's say, this first 40 million, that gives you a whole different set of assumptions on how you pay back the rest of it. Right? So at each step along the way, we'll have choices, you'll have choices of, you know, when do we want to borrow it and where do we want to repay it?
Question. So on the news today, they were talking with the Fed's possibly going to be a meeting in January discussing things. There's obviously passing uncertainty, which helps us. Are we going to be able to get in before they do something like that?
It was today. And they rate, so they may do, there's more actions heading into 19. But the most recent one that impacts what we're talking about in this 40 million happened today. And the Fed unanimously raised the target rate another quarter percent. And the long-term Treasury rates went lower. Should sound weird to you, right? The Fed increased rates, but long-term borrowing rates came down. And the reason for that is, the reason the Fed is, the Federal Reserve Board, minimize the slang here, is raising their rates is because they see the robust economy, they see the 4% GDP growth, they see wage inflation, right? They're trying to minimize the potential of future inflation, which is really what makes those 10-year and 20-year and 30-year rates go up. Because if you're the investor that's going to buy a Cedarburg bond and you're going to own it for 20 years and you think inflation's at 1.5% to 2% versus thinking it's at 2.5% to 3%, your rate of return, your demand changes, right? So by the Federal Reserve Board raising their short rate, yes, that does move the shorter rates up a bit. But it's so far that, coupled with the uncertainty in the trade wars and the stock market itself. I mean, the stock market has been pretty successful, too. It makes Cedarburg bonds seem fun and safe and easy. That holds those rates down. And so that's the reason we're trying to get things together to get that first amount locked there. Or well before you need 40 million. You're not going to spend 40 million in the next 12, 18 months. So you're borrowing it early, but you're borrowing it early on purpose to try and take advantage of what the market is offering. So the last page really just was to give you an idea of kind of future, you know, upcoming steps in the process, who's taking care of it. The majority of that is the administrative team, Ben and Todd. The board has the discussion tonight and had the discussion at PNF last week. And then President Clerk would, once we're ready to enter the market and lock in rates with investors, the President Clerk would finalize the approving certificate, which states that we met or exceeded the parameters established in the resolution. So any questions on that? So in summary, it's great that you took the process you did over the last three years to get to a scope of work that the community supports. You did it in a time when the market is still in a range that's historically low. And we're benefiting from some uncertainty in the markets that made it even lower in the last 30 days. So so far, some good. Ideally, once we get this first set done in January, we'll come back to the board in February and present the update and say, here's where you are so far, you know, after the first 40 million.
Good explanation.
Any further questions or comments?
So Ben, you need action on letter A.
Yep. So there's two resolutions that Brian explained as part of his borrow.
So I'm vote to approve of letter A.
Well, second.
Motion in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
I'm vote to approve referendum financing by the manager in D.
Seconded.
Motion in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
And so with those two motions approved, there's a
A lot of signing.
A lot of signing for the President later. And all the information has been submitted and collected by Cora and Brady and we have 10 signatures each.
All right, moving on to IDC.
This is related to the referendum, as Brian mentioned in there, maximizing interest earnings as we have this borrow. Obviously, when we take on the 40 million or 39, 40 million, we won't have an invoice the next day for that same amount. We'll have these proceeds available for invoices that come over the next three years the project commences and we receive expenses along the way. So what we do is find ways to gain more interest from these proceeds by investing them. The default is leaving the liquid accounts that's accessible. And obviously, those have lower interest rates, though. So are there any opportunities for us to invest them in CD or treasury of some kind to get a higher interest rate back, to get more interest earnings that we can put back into the project? So as part of that process, we put out RFPs for bond proceeds management companies. And what they help with is not only investments of these proceeds in terms of gaining interest back, but they also make sure they're secure. They help with reporting of the cash flow as we go through the project, maintaining that balance between expected cash flow and kind of actual activity. And they also help us with reporting certain kind of guidelines that we have to follow in terms of arbitrage and whatnot. So we put out the RFPs, multiple firms, submitted responses. The PNF committee reviewed them last week. And we came to the conclusion of recommendation of PMA as the vendor for bond proceeds management based on the rates they're able to come back with their fee. And then also just the past experience we've had with them. We've worked with them in the past and currently work with them on other smaller projects, so.
I wasn't at that meeting. Do they, at least like federally ensure that those options that they, that they invest in? Or how, how do we make sure that we're covered in case there was a, you know, major disaster worldwide, whatever, things happen? And how does the insurance work with us? Are we fully insured for pulling out or a portion of it? How's that work?
They'll lock us through that and show us how we're protected in different ways. Either they can see with a certain amount or there's some collateral set up with that. So the goal of it is to make sure they're all secure and they'll have a little breakdown of what collateral looks like as well. As well as getting the board options in terms of investing locally or more interest earning stuff. So that's all part of that process to make sure.
Ultimately, we approve.
Yeah, they have a plan of cash flow and how we invest it.
Right. So we can review all that, what Kevin's talking about.
Yep.
Yeah, generally, you get higher interest rates, you're taking more risks.
Yeah.
So you want to take a lot of risks.
Take a risk.
We want to make sure.
Not that money.
Yeah, exactly.
The priority will be security of the.
Right. And you said we'd use that PMA company in the past.
Yep. Mostly for if we have, we have more cash balance, we'd use them for the longer amounts. We'll have throughout the life of the project, there's always a certain percentage that's liquid that we can have available in case expenses need up for whatever reason. But right now, C.D. Schben wrote, they're both working on that cash flow timeline. And so they have a tentative one right now that we can start that process, so.
All right, do we have a motion for the bond proceeds management, correct?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Well, seconded.
Motion in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. All right, moving right on to the calendar.
Before you this evening, we have the recommendation for the calendar for the 2019-20 school year. We brought this to the committee of the whole in November. I had a chance to review it, take a look at it. What you're seeing this evening is very much the same calendar that was presented at that point. Since then, we also did a survey. Since then, we also did a survey of staff and parents. We got about 1,000 responses, and the percentage of people who indicated they prefer standard spring break was 74% total. So pretty overwhelming that they either had no opinion or they wanted to move there in the well over half, said they wanted the standard break. So the only difference really significant between this calendar and calendars in the past would be moving to having spring break that last, I'm sorry, the third week of March, third full week of March. And 29 other school districts have already made that same commitment or are about to make that same commitment. So that's something I did not think I would see in my lifetime where that many districts agreed to get that on the same time, very much a lot of advantages that we reviewed in the background at committee meetings. So we'd ask that that calendar be approved this evening.
Just wanted to say thank you for taking the time, because I asked about asking for input, and I know it took extra work, but SASS, I appreciate you reaching out and getting parent and staff into it.
And just to be clear, I had one person reach out to me who wasn't in favor of it. And one of their concerns was this is a very long-term commitment. I think really this is, our thought is maybe this is a long-term thing that we'll do, but we're just really doing the calendar for several years right now, and potentially it works out well, and we'd like it, we can make it many, many years for future board changes of each year. How is that optioned out there? Since I've been here, we've only done one calendar at a time, and the most I've ever heard anybody do is two at a time, and so sometimes there are advantages to doing that. But we actually looked at that possibility, and there were too many questions that we weren't comfortable bringing forward.
Okay.
And if you look at the calendar, what we're talking about is we have the last week in March, which is going to be spring break, and then later on in April, there's Easter with Good Friday off in front of that. And so that's a bit of a change from historically what we've been doing. And I reached out to, so I had a pastor over at First Emmanuel Bluefront and talked to him briefly, and he said he was tickled about it. And the reason it is is because when he has services on Sundays on Easter, he doesn't recognize anyone. Everyone's on spring break, everyone's gone. I don't think that I myself have been to our church on Easter in 15 years, have been in Orlando or at Hilton Head or something.
A Florida church.
Right, right. So but so they're very, they're very thrilled, our partners and the community, that they're that we're going to have, going to have this scheduled the way it is now. So we've reached out to them, as Todd always does, with their calendar prior to voting on this.
I'll move to approve the calendar.
I'll second that.
Motion in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Against, motion carries. All right, moving on, school safety plan. Ted?
Tonight, we have in front of the board on item E and F. Both are in response to Act 143, which was put into place in regards to the, some of the violent acts around the country and need for school safety improvement. And both these items are now a requirement for the district to do. And I'll kind of just read a little, little blurb that kind of outlines what we need to do, why we need to do it. But we'll need an action item on item E, but just to review by the board on item F. So we'll go from one at a time. But for item E, the Act 143 requires that before January 1st, 2019, and before each January 1st thereafter. So this is an annual event. Every school board must file a copy of its school safety plan, including the most recent data in which the school board reviewed and approved the school safety plan, and submit that approval to the Office of School Safety. And we did review this with the B and G committee on December 6th and went through each, just did a quick overview and shared that with them. You have access to those on board docs right now and can review those. We'd be happy to talk more if there's a need be. So B and G did review that and gave us their approval of that board. So I don't think we'll need an action item.
I'll move to approve. I'll second. Just for discussion.
Yeah.
It's important for everybody to know, a lot of these things, we've already been doing. This is stuff we've been doing. The only difference is now the state requires us as a board to approve it, even though our schools have already been doing all this stuff. So we're taking action on something to meet the law, but not really changing anything significant to what we've been doing for the safety of our kids all along.
Yep.
I have a follow-up question. Are these reference guides that are listed here, are those like in the classrooms or?
They are, the classroom, that's posted. Yep, our primary guide is the one that's secured, because it is, you know, we want to keep that close to
They may know what it is.
Yep, but those reference guides are ones that teachers have, just in case somebody does happen, they quickly
Right. Quickly assess which situation it is. Thanks.
And then the next item.
No more discussion?
No.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Against, motion carries.
All right. And then the next item is just a review by the board. And then we have to have to review our safety drills with the board annually. Act 143 requires that before January 1st, 2019, and before each January 1st thereafter, each school board shall ensure that any school building regularly occupied by pupils, pupils are drilled at least annually in the proper response to a school violence event in accordance with the school safety plan in effect for that school building. The district must submit a brief written evaluation of the bill to the school board within 30 days of holding the drill. And in order to comply with Act 143, these drills must also be conducted after March of the act, 2nd of 2018, when the requirement was written into legislation. So this time every year, the board will see those plans and get to review those. We've got a format where we just kind of list what we did, some variations, and we're going into our, in terms of response options in the future, so we'll change up kind of regularly, we'll do different scenarios and make it more applicable to our process around Alice. So the little difference in the future when we do those drills.
And that's just a, this is just a review, correct?
Correct.
I like that you're, you're saying that you're going to do it when none of the students are in different classes too.
Correct.
Not just in the classroom, but you're going to be in gym and then using, and different things like that, so there's different scenarios there. So that's in the time and the, and the place and so forth.
Our safety summit in the fall, in August, we did this one. Last year was, had a great response from the staff. They appreciated the time. We did a variety of safety topics this past year, where we will change up a little bit this coming summer when teachers return. It had, the primary focus is Alice, which is, I did true response options to train all the staff and make sure that they're ready to work with students when they, when they arrive in the hall.
Great. I guess, again, it's important to say, we've been doing this, and it's done in conjunction with the police department. All my years in the police department, I took place, took part in a lot of those drills at different schools because the police department works jointly with us. So it's something we're doing. Obviously, it's going to change when we institute Alice, but it's something we're doing. It's just now something that the state's requiring a formal report back to the board on it, again, so the taxpayer's not something we've been doing already.
So no action required. We go into the minutes that the board reviewed these items, and we have dialogue, and we'll submit them to the public justice.
Is there anyone that would like to speak from the public? Anyone? All right. So I have to read this real quick, and then you can come up here.
He lies, it's not really real quick.
It may be longer than what you're going to say. "In the past, State Attorney General issued guidance on how governmental bodies such as school boards should conduct public comment portions of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist governmental bodies in avoiding violation of the state's open meetings laws. The essence of this guidance is that unless the topic being brought to the board by the public is listed on the meeting's agenda, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could be done held. The reason for this guidance is not to limit open discussion, but rather to ensure that all interested parties have equal opportunity to participate in the discussions with the full school board. We on the school board encourage community input, and we want to hear from you, our constituents. However, we take the state open meetings law seriously, and will follow the guidance as outlined by the State Attorney General. Therefore, if an item is listed on tonight's agenda, open dialogue may occur between the individual from the public and board members. If it is not listed, the board will be limited to listening only and will not be able to respond to comments or questions. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you want to have a discussion regarding the topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda. As always, you are also encouraged to discuss any issue with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside of the meeting setting. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. As per school policy, 167.3, each statement made by a participant should be limited to three minutes. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with the courtesy and respect you'd like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name, address for the record. As a reminder, this meeting is being videotaped and will be broadcast via the YouTube channel."
Hello, my name is Ted Lenhart. Actually, let's see, North 88, West 5610, Reed Sea Circle, Cedarburg. And I want to thank my kids for pushing me to do this. I'm a rookie, so I'm not, I don't know what, you know, usually how this works, but I do have professional design experience with school furniture from K through 12. I had five years of design experience at KI. And they pushed me to come up here to see if, you know, I could help, you know, with the design process. I've been through many of schools, many classrooms and dirty. I currently have one of the, you know, top-rated classroom furniture collections out there that, you know, won awards for Ed Spaces and Eicon. And so I'm just kind of like, no financial needs or anything, it's just more a pride thing, have three kids in the district to see if, you know, at least, at least one of them can grow up and have, sit in dad's chair. So that's kind of all I'm interested in. If you, if you guys want help or need assistance, feel free to reach out to me. That's kind of my statement. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank your kids, dude.
All right. Moving back to item G, donation.
A few items that we're going to approve. First, I asked the board to approve $50,000 from Gordon and Shay Village for a theme build. The donation is in honor of Judy Keller, Sharon Keller, and Jeanne Brown, and will be used to support the equal opportunity class at CHS for 1819 school year. Second donation is an amount of $2,098.95 for some PTO. This donation will be used to support persons' RAS kids literacy program for the 1819 school.
Second?
Motion in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. So we're going to move on to committee reports. I know we discussed a little bit of the buildings and grounds already. Kevin, do you have anything to add?
No, we covered a lot of those topics tonight, the school safety plan, the safety drills, and the building update of the progress being made.
Okay. Person on finance committee, Mr. Goldbach, do you have anything to add? I know we've spoken length about a lot of those then.
We did, I think Ben and Brian have covered most of what we talked about with referendum financing and how we're going to manage the finances alone, so I have nothing more to say tonight.
And then finally, committee, Mr. Leach.
We talked about a trip for the band to Italy and France, which will be coming with four of us at our next board meeting for approval. We're recommending approval. They wanted to get a head start on it so that they have more time for fundraising for the families, it's about a $3,500 trip.
We went to both countries.
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to play in Italy.
New Year's.
New Year's Day. Yeah. Just kind of exciting for them, but we wanted to give them a head start on the fundraising, so it'll be on the next agenda. We spent a lot of time talking about tech ed update and the actual input process that teachers and staff are taking part in. Obviously, this building referendum is a lot on design and space and more space, so obviously curriculum being a good part of that, we wanted to weigh in and get as much information on that. And it's been exciting because I've heard some from the teachers that have participated already, and they're excited because we're taking their input on, you know, what their classrooms are going to look like in the future. So it's good to hear that they have a lot of ideas, and they're showing up with sheets of papers and drawings and things already. When they come up, they're coming and prepare.
Pictures.
Saying, you know, pictures of other places on, this is what we should be looking at doing here. So it's really exciting, so we wanted to make sure that, you know, we talked about in the referendum that this was a big part about, you know, space and about curriculum. So we definitely need curriculum input, so we're glad we've had that, and we're going to have another meeting next month again on it. And then the other thing is we did, we are going to be recommending at the next meeting, you'll have a recommended approval for an AP government text.
Excellent.
If I can just add, I'm really happy that everyone's on the curriculum base, but I'm really pleased to hear that you guys are jumping into it and thinking that it's such an important part of this whole project, this curriculum, that, you know, it'd be a shame if it was just the same old curriculum and the new space. So I'm really happy that you guys are jumping into it, because the staff is jumping into it, thinking this is the best way to deliver this, and that's wonderful.
And it's exciting because we're seeing a lot of things that are, you know, taking place. We've gone through that set cycle so many years in waiting to, and I'm really working hard on this kind of continuous cycle, so that we're not waiting X number of years until we change something, because things are changing so fast. So it's nice to get those more updates, to talk about that, because we're seeing how some of those new things, Rockin', I don't know, Rockin' Back, you know, where we're going to get engineering at the grade school level. So obviously, that maker spaces and things change, so those are all things we need to make sure we get into the lines.
Great.
Excellent work. All right. This time, I will take my motion where we will adjourn into session to improvements of November 20th, where we may also consider social or personal history, perhaps learning data of specific persons under jurisdiction of the board, which it discusses public would likely have substantial adverse effect on the interpretation person referred to in such histories pursuant to 19.851F. We will also adjourn to, for ever competitive bargaining reasons, require closed session pursuant to 19.851E. Also adjourn to consider employment promotion compensation performance evaluation of any public employee which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility pursuant to 19.851C. And we might then, happens adjourned into open session to discuss those items that we, in executive, so do I have a motion?
To adjourn to next session.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.